Good evening, councillors.
Good evening.
Thank you. The first item of business is the appointment, the confirmation of councillor Peter Wishwood as chairman of the Southern Area Planning Committee. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
He's not, he's sent his apologies for this evening, so if we can move on to item two, the appointment of vice-chairman to confirm that councillor Carol Coburn be appointed as the vice-chairman of the planning committee. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Right, good evening councillors and members of the public, thank you for coming. Before we start the meeting proper, can I just remind you of the fire precautions and regulations which are on the screen behind me and make sure you go by the fire exit in an orderly fashion when we meet over in the Waitrose car park. And can I also please ask you to ensure that all your mobile phones are on silent. And to the members of the public, can I just remind you that this is not a public meeting, it's a meeting held in public and we would appreciate it please if you would not refrain, if you would refrain from booing or cheering or in any other way trying to participate in the meeting, thank you very much indeed. On to business, item three, the minutes. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 15th of April 2015 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of the meeting?
Agreed.
I'll do that at the end. Moving on to four, the apologies for absence, Emma, have there been any?
We have apologies from councillors Peter Wishwood and Stephen Mulliner and councillor Jed Hall may be late.
I'm here.
Sorry.
Do I have to turn this on and off?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thanks. Moving on to item five then, declarations of interest. Have members declared any interest, Emma?
Number four of the meeting.
Do members have any other interests they wish to declare? Yes, councillor?
I am a member of the Hesley Town Council Planning Committee.
And I take it that applies to councillors Piper and Round as well? Okay, they've got the same interest now. Any other interests? Moving on then to item six, questions from members of the public. Have there been any questions received, Emma?
Number saved.
On to item seven then, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation? Elizabeth, I take it?
Thank you, chairman, there's been nothing to report since your last meeting, but members will recall we did a fairly extensive update at the last meeting and we have sent you since a summary of those legislative changes since then. Thank you very much, chairman.
Anyone have any questions they wish to ask, Elizabeth, or can we move on? All right, on to item eight then, the quarterly enforcement report with Beth.
Thank you, chairman. This report provides members with an update on the progress of the enforcement team for the final quarter, January to March 2015. If I take you straight to page 10 where the site-specific updates for the Southern Area start, North Side, just a quick update, we're now at the stage where we don't consider that any formal action could be taken on a section 215 notices, but we are aware of other issues on the site. So this particular site will remain on the report, but a new set of words will be included to update the situation. The land at Wunterton Arms, a letter has now been sent by our legal section to the landowner and they are proceeding with preparing the prosecution in line with criminal practice and procedure. Turning then to section two on page 11, you'll note that we have had a rise of approximately 8% of cases on hand, so we're at 247 for that quarter. That said, we did have 30% rise in complaints that we'd received in the same quarter, so and we managed to close more than the previous quarter as well. We're still currently well below the, well, I say well below, we're still below the target of 250 cases on hand overall. If I turn then to page 12, table three at the bottom, you'll see that our performance against the local performance indicator is actually the highest it's been as long as There are no appeals to discuss and no notices have been served in the Southern Area for that particular quarter. That's all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you, chair.
Thank you, Beth, yes, do members have any questions? Councillor Edwards?
Congratulations, Vice-Chairman, thank you. I'd like to go back to page number 11, okay? With regard to this quarter's statistics, if you look at this quarter compared to last year, there is significantly more cases received, there's less cases closed and there's more cases on hand, okay? Is there something we need to know with regard to this? Because it seems that, you know, they've just gone up. That's the highest number of cases received for some considerable time.
Thank you, chairman. I can't tell you why we've received more complaints, I guess because the economy's picked up, people are building, we've had a rise in planning applications, so I suspect, I rather suspect that is why the cases on hand, cases received figure has risen. It's obviously had a knock-on effect and the rest of the figures, our work there is very much focused on the new complaints as opposed to attempting to get everything closed off. That said, you know, it's still, we've still closed more than we've, yeah.
I understand that, but looking at the increase, it's over 50%. It's a fantastic increase in cases received, yeah, but if you say it's because we're getting busier and people are doing more things, I understand that completely, but fine, thanks.
I think the important thing, councillor Edwards, is how we deal with them all, isn't it? We can't really restrict the flow. Are there any other questions from members? There's a recommendation on the first page of the agenda to note the quarterly enforcement report, is that agreed? Moving on then to item nine, site visits. I take it the date on my helpful sheet is wrong and the date, the date of any site inspections from this meeting is the 7th of July?
Yes, before the meeting.
Yeah, before the meeting, yeah, that's fine. So moving on then to the planning applications. Planning application A1 WA/2015-0215, the outline application for the erection of a dwelling with access layout and scale to be approved at land adjacent to Highfield, Scotland Lane in Hazelmead. And Louise, would you like to introduce this application, please?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, this is an application for an outline planning permission for the erection of a new dwelling and the application is for access layout and scale with appearance and landscaping to be dealt with at reserve matters stage. The officer's recommendation is for approval. The site is located on the southern side of Scotland Lane, close to the junction with Haste Hill. Detached residential properties are located to the north and west of the site and a three to four-storey block of flats is located to the south of the site with single-story garages close to the southern boundary of the site. Woodland is located to the north-east. This is an aerial view of the site, there's a sweet chestnut tree in the north-east corner of the site which is subject to a tree protection order. The site was previously occupied by two bungalows, the outline which is set out here on the plan. These were removed in order to gain consent for the erection of the host property which is located to the south-west of the site 25 years ago. Since then it has been a garden area for the host property, Highfield. There is an existing shed on the site which is shown on the plan. These photos are taken from within the site, the first looking to the east of the site, also showing the northern boundary which joins Scotland Lane. The second is looking to the west, towards the existing access which runs along there. The third is looking to the south, in the background you can see the garages associated with Witwell Hatch on the boundary and then just over the top you can see the flats beyond the garages. These top two photos show the northern boundary of the site and the existing site entrance which serves the host property, Highfield. This photo is opposite the site with the entrance to Bracken Hills to the left of the photo. And this final photo shows the garages which are situated to the south of the site and serve Witwell Hatch. This plan shows the proposed layout, the property would be accessed via the existing access which serves the host property, Highfield. The proposed property would be positioned towards the west of the site with garage into the side and hard standing for car parking at the front. Amenity space would be provided to the rear. The tree which is subject to the tree protection order would be protected and retained, but full details of landscaping would be dealt with at reserve matters stage. This slide shows the relationship between the property and Scotland Lane which is at a lower land level than the application site. Full details of the appearance of the dwelling and the garage would be dealt with at the reserve matters stage as well. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, housing land supply, the impact on traffic and parking, financial considerations and the effect on the SPAs. The matters of judgment are the impact on the AGLB, the impact on the character of the countryside, the sustainability of the location, the impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Louise, this application is subject to public speaking, we do have two speakers who are going to speak to you. Can I invite the first speaker, please, Mr Peter Bridge? I'm sure Emma's run through the process with you.
Yes.
It's the large button and you will have three minutes from when you first start to speak. Thank you very much.
Firstly, thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak at this meeting. I'm the owner of Hazelwood which lies directly to the north of the proposed site, but also speak on behalf of the owners of Bracken Hills and the Old House which are my neighbouring properties. I would like to start by saying this is the third application for development on the land at Highfield. Approvals have already been granted in 1990 to demolish two bungalows and build a new house, the work of which has been completed, and again in 2014 to demolish the existing property and erect a contemporary replacement. I did not oppose the last application for the dwelling, but believe any further development for this site is totally inappropriate. My own work involves working as a planning agent and I recently handled an application for a replacement garage at Bracken Hills directly opposite the proposed site. Despite being only a metre higher than the original garage, the application was refused and I give the reason. The proposal would, by virtue of its scale, height, form, bulk, mass design and appearance and prominence, be detrimental to the character of the street scene and therefore harmful to the amenities of the area and contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley local plan. In the officer's report, it was the view that the proposed building which would be set forward of the main dwelling on Scotland Lane would appear unduly prominent and would be intrusive to the street scene and detrimental to the character and appearance of the area. Whilst it was noticed that there was already an existing garage on the site, it was considered that the proposal, by virtue of its increased height, would have a materially harmful impact on the visual impact of the area. The garage was eventually amended and finally approved after its height was reduced to five metres and it had to be moved a further three metres away from Scotland Lane. Allowing for the differences in ground level, the ridge height of this proposed garage is something like four and a half metres lower than that of the proposed development. I believe that recommending the proposal is in contradiction to previous planning advice and policy. I also believe that the hedge screening issue is a bit of a red herring, the hedge is not protected and is already unnecessarily tall. It has been allowed to grow significantly over the last year and is about a metre and a half higher than it was in 2014. I have sent Louise Yandel photographic evidence of this. This proves the hedge height is variable, can be reduced at any time and there is absolutely nothing to stop residents reducing the heights of the hedge in the future. With regard privacy, although the property, the proposed property is more than 23 metres away from my house, the proposal will overlook bedroom, kitchen and living room windows. If there are no windows in the north elevation, we will be faced with a very large and attractive towering brick elevation and gable facing Scotland Lane. Finally, with regards to the committee, I understand that committee members have not visited the site, I urge if they are considering approving this application that they visit the site both and view the site from both Scotland Lane and from the drives of adjacent properties.
Thank you, Mr Bridge, excellent timing. We, our second speaker is a supporter of the application, Sarah Featherston, is an agent for the application team. Exactly the same for you, three minutes from when you start. Sorry, yes.
Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight in support of our application. Firstly, I would like to touch on why our clients want to build this house and then secondly respond to the town council and neighbours' concerns. Our client, Paul, is here tonight with Lorna's parents, Steve and Cathy Richards. Paul and Lorna are living in Highfield House with their two young children and the idea to build on the adjacent plot was initially born out of a need to have a home for their elderly parents who want to be closer to the family. However, what's interesting about this proposal is that it resolves both small and large-scale issues because not only can it be a home for the parents, but it also helps the current housing crisis by turning an underused awkward plot into a sustainable development which is advocated by the National Planning Policy that seeks for more sites for housing. The plot previously did have two bungalows on it and since their demolition has become, and since their demolition has become quite an unsightly piece of land, dislocated and remote from the adjacent Highfield House. While there was a previous planning approval to build Highfield House with a condition to demolish the two bungalows, this was over 20 years ago and current planning policy has been updated to meet changing demands and new housing targets which the council needs to address. The site is perfect for Lorna's parents' house, not only because they can be close to their daughter, but also because the site's proximity to the town centre and local services in fact, and local services are very close, which makes it an ideal quiet location for not only them but any other of our growing population of over 60s. And in that respect, despite being in designated C2 countryside beyond Greenbelt, it's not located remotely in countryside and is in fact very much part of a residential street with houses all around it, something that policy C2 says should be considered as an exception to the policy if the area is built up and has close and is close to the settlement boundary, which it is. We do hear and understand the town council and neighbours' concerns about visual impact and privacy and want to reassure them that these are issues that our client also shares. Paul and Lorna would also like to retain the existing high hedge trees and dense vegetation around the property as this is a natural screening and as such, the house will not be visible from the street. And the house has also been located so that there is minimum disruption to the removal of any of these, no removal is required. We've also located the house so that only at smaller dimension the gable end faces the street and the house windows benefit from a west-east orientation away from adjoining properties. Actually, adjoining properties of which Witwell Hatch and Hazelwood are the closest are well over 40 metres away from the house. And within that 40-metre distance there are a number of mature trees between 15 to 20 metres high, which are generally higher than the 8.1-metre-high ridge of this new house. So in terms of the neighbour and Peter Bridge's concerns, we're happy to accept a condition to retain screening and will address both this and the material treatment of the house when we submit a reserved matters application for landscape and appearance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Featherston, again for being so prompt. Members, it's now open to you, but I must warn councillor Hall that you are a little too late, you may take part in the debate, but I'm afraid you will not be able to vote on this particular application.
So, chairman, may I just ask if before members, the debate starts, if we could just go through the update sheet which we didn't do beforehand, if that would be possible? Thank you very much.
Apologies. Just so, as members can see in the update sheet, we received two additional representations which reiterated comments in the agenda report. We also received additional comments from the applicant and agent which were just described by the agent there. An additional condition is also recommended, which is that construction work and delivery is to and from the site shall not take place outside the hours of 8am till 6pm on Monday to Friday and 8am till 1pm on Saturday and no activities on Sunday and bank or public holidays. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Louise, now you've had the presentation and the update sheet, over to you councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, chairman, sorry to what my colleagues feel, I have been to the site. I think it's one where a site visit would actually be highly appropriate, so subject to their feelings, I'd like to propose that we defer this so a site visit can take place.
Do you have a second of that proposition councillor Mulliner? Councillor Edwards, do you wish to speak to it?
I'd like to support councillor Mulliner's recommendation.
In that case, we'll put it straight to the vote and see if there's a majority in favour of a site visit for this particular application. Would you please show? And there's against a site visit? Any abstentions? So that's carried and we have a site visit, yes, on the 7th of July, there'll be a site visit to this site. And moving on then, thank you very much. Second application, item B1, WA 2015-0137, it's on page 47 of your agenda and it's for the change of use and alterations to a barn and lean to to provide a residential dwelling following demolition of the existing outbuildings at, or some existing outbuildings at Dockenfield Farm, Pitt Lane in Frensham. And it's Louise again who's going to introduce this one.
Thank you, chair. Members may remember that this application was deferred from April's committee meeting so that members could attend a site visit and for further clarification as to whether the site could be considered as being within the AOMB. The site is located on the northern side of the street where it joins Pitt Lane in Dockenfield. The barn is part of the wider Dockenfield Farm complex which consists of a number of redundant barns and outbuildings and Dockenfield Farmhouse which is located to the south and a residential annex attached to it. The barn subject to this application is located in the centre of the buildings associated with Dockenfield Farm. Further unoccupied, yeah, sorry, further unoccupied agricultural barns are located to the north and north-west of the site. These are annotated as barns F, G and H on the block plan. Two linked agricultural barns are located to the south, annotated as barns C and D, and these have recently been refused planning permission for their extension and conversion to a dwelling. Dockenfield Farmhouse and its associated annex are located here to the south. The buildings to the west originally formed part of Dockenfield Farm, however, they have since been separated and are in separate ownership and are now used for equestrian purposes. Dockenfield cottages are in residential use and they are located to the south-west. The existing barn is unoccupied at present but was previously used for stabling at ground floor with an ancillary four-bedroom and studio flat at first floor. This slide shows the existing elevations of the original barn and the later single-story addition. There are also two storage sheds linked by an arch which would be removed as part of this application. These photographs show the existing barn and its extension. This photograph shows the existing storage sheds and the arch which are proposed to be removed. This photo shows barn F which is located to the north of the application site and the equestrian barn which is outside the site and in separate ownership. This is the proposed block plan which shows the residential curtilage outlined in red with the amenity space provided to the north and car parking in the shaded area to the east. As part of the alterations proposed, dormers would be added to the northern roof slope and a pitched roof along with a balcony on top of the extension. Chimneys would be added along with additional fenestration to each elevation and a raised terraced area to the east. The proposed accommodation would comprise a kitchen diner, living room, study, family room, WC, utility room and boot room at ground floor level. Four bedrooms and four bathrooms would be provided at first floor level. As mentioned earlier, this site was deferred from April's planning committee and to clarify if the site could be considered as being within the AOMB pending the future AOMB boundary review. Both Natural England and the Surrey Hills AOMB adviser have confirmed that the site cannot be treated as being within the AOMB and Natural England have confirmed that it could be years before the review takes place. The impact on the AOMB is a matter of judgment and this diagram shows where the AOMB is situated in relation to the site in the area shaded in yellow. It is the officer's opinion that the proposal would not impact on the setting of the AOMB. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, the loss of the agricultural use, highways access and parking, contaminated land, biodiversity and compliance with the Habitat Regulations 2010, the effect upon the SPAs and the SAC. The matters of judgment are the impact on the countryside and visual impact including the impact on the AGLB, the impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right, members, over to you. Councillor Inchbould.
Well, somebody's got to get the ball rolling. Well, having visited the site yesterday, I must say I went along feeling rather dubious about the whole thing, but having seen the site, I came away with the feeling that converting it to a public convenience would be preferable to what's there now because it really does look a complete mess. So broadly, I would go along with the officer's recommendation, but with one reservation, the proposed fenestration on the eastern end, north-eastern end of it, overlooking open countryside, I think is really unpleasant and it will, the view of it from across that open countryside will be just horrible. So that is my one reservation, otherwise I think, yes, it's a perfectly reasonable use of a redundant farm building. Thank you, chairman.
I take another speak, can anybody, one of the officers just answer that because we always tell we have to judge what's in front of us.
Given that it would be a minor change to the submitted scheme, we could recommend a condition requiring full details of the fenestration on the eastern elevation to be submitted and approved prior to the commencement of the development.
Are there any further comments councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, chairman, yes, I too went to the site visit yesterday. I think my two comments, first of all to support what councillor Inchbould has said, I'd like the condition to, if possible, include the use of some form of darkened glass because the real problem is that that amount of glass, when the sun is in the appropriate direction, would make a huge flash effect all over the place and it is the one part of the design which I think is not acceptable as it stands. The second thing is this site clearly is aimed at further development and some form of master plan I think must be requested from the applicant. This doesn't mean that I'm actually necessarily against further development, I think we want to see very, very clearly what is in mind. In its favour, it's well off the road, by about 60 yards to the farmhouse and a further 40 yards to this building. As councillor Inchbould says, the whole thing's in a very tatty state and providing it's correctly designed, it could be an improvement to the overall environment, not a detriment. However, as I say, the, as this is the starting design, it shows, I'm afraid, a lack of sensitivity to the impact of that amount of windows on the open countryside and, as I say, if we can get a condition to control that, I'd be happy to go along with the recommendation. If we couldn't, the advice would be better reject this and ask them to come back with a better idea, then I'm afraid I would then be voting against the recommendation. But if the officer can clarify that very precisely, I'd be most obliged.
Can somebody help us with that and get the wording correct councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, chairman, I think that the wording would be, notwithstanding the submitted plans, the details of the fenestration of the east elevation shall first be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority and then development should be carried out in strict accordance with the approved details. Now, in assessing those details coming forward, we'll be able to pick up on your suggestion in respect to- in respect of type of fenestration and glass, and I think, hopefully, if the applicants are minded to go along with that, that should be a very agreeable resolution to the issue. Trust members are happy with that condition.
Councillor Mulliner, are you happy? I can't see you. Anybody else wish to comment to this? Yes, councillor Hess?
Just to make sure that we get an acceptable decision first time round. Are you inclining to a view that whatever fenestration they use needs to be in character with the surrounding environment? Do we, can we give any more sort of shaping or guidance to the form that an acceptable fenestration might take?
Well, first of all, if you look at the building now, it's simply a blank wooden wall, so there's nothing that's in keeping with that. But to be reasonable about it, one simply wants to make sure that the fenestration is as unobvious as possible. I would think it'd have to be considerably less in extent, and if modern darkened glasses actually provide enough light while creating such a huge reflective area to the outside countryside, that's the sort of thing I would have in mind. But really, it's up to the applicant and the officers to come to an agreement, if they can, taking on board the concerns, assuming that colleagues agree with them.
Right, thank you. Yes, Elizabeth, you want to come back?
Chairman, could I suggest that when we receive the details pursuant to the condition, that the case officer discusses them with the ward member to make sure there's agreement on the precise detail? Would that be satisfactory to you? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I think we perhaps ought to take a vote on the additional condition to make sure that we're all in agreement with that first, before we take the, you know, the full recommendation. So, can I just make it, or ask you if you are quite contented with the wording of the condition, as Louise, or was it Elizabeth, I've lost track, read it out, to enable? Can you just read it again? Elizabeth? Yeah, I know, sorry. If you could just read it again, make sure that everyone's happy with the recommendation as well, that it goes back to the ward member so that agreement. I think, I was also on the site visit, and I think it was just this one question that really was the problem.
So, just to repeat the condition again, notwithstanding the submitted plans, details of the fenestration of the east elevation shall first be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority, and that should be prior to the commencement of development, for stop. Development shall be carried out in strict accordance with the approved details, and then, that would be the condition with an appropriate reason, and then, in accordance with your instruction, when we receive those details pursuant to the condition, we will, if you would like us to discuss those details with the ward member, which clearly, normally, we would discharge details as a delegated matter, but in view of the sensitivity, the case officer would contact the ward member and make sure that the details are acceptable in that way. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Mulliner?
One very pedantic point, it's the north-eastern elevation.
It's the one that you're going to see very clearly across the view across, so it's a very important elevation. Oh, councillor Hess?
I suppose what I was getting to was, first of all, that it's a very modern window on a Victorian barn, and the other point is that one end of the building looks fairly traditional, but the end that's under discussion is sort of ultra-modern. So, yeah, would it be easier to approve a decision if the fenestration was in keeping with the period of the building and presented something that was less obvious to people looking at it from the AOMB? Is that material? Do we have any view on that?
I think, councillor Hess, we've really covered this, because, you know, it is going to go through the officers, the officer's going to have a look at it, discuss it with the applicant, then it's going to go back to the ward member. I mean, I don't know how any more people are going to put their two penneth in before we get something that suits everybody. As I think councillor Mulliner or as councillor Inchbull said, I mean, we are talking a very unprepossessing building at the moment, you know, pretty bog-standard barn, I mean, that's all it is. And anything would improve it, and as long as we get the detail of this right, so that there is no unnecessary glare across the countryside from the AOMB, then I think we've probably done as much as we can as a planning authority. Does anybody else wish to comment before we move to the recommendation? I was just reminded I didn't actually take the vote on the condition, sorry, I got Elizabeth to read it out. So, are you all contented with the wording of that condition? So, can we move then to the full recommendation, which is on page 78 of your agenda? So, it now reads, permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 14, which are on pages 78 to 83 of your agenda, informatives 1 and 2 on page 87 of the agenda, and the additional condition that you've just agreed. So, the recommendation is to grant. Can I see all those in favour of granting, subject to those conditions and informatives? You can vote now. Sorry, anybody against? Sorry, councillor Hall, you're up and running completely now. You can, now you've been here for the whole lot, you can, yeah, you can vote on anything now. So, that recommendation is agreed, thank you very much. Can we move on then to the final application, which I can't get hold of? Item B2, WA 2015 0807, this is for, it's on page 85 of your agenda, and it's for the change of use from coffee shop, which is a Class A1, to coffee shop-stroke café, which comes under Class A3, and the installation of an extraction duct at 3 Charter Walk, West Street in Hazlemere. And once again, it's Louise who's going to present this one.
Just to draw members' attention to the update sheet, the additional agenda report was published prior to the expiry date for comments, however, no additional representations have been received in the meantime. This application is for the change of use from a coffee shop in Class A1 to a coffee shop-cafe within Class A3 and the installation of an extract duct. The officer recommendation is for approval. The site is located on the north-western side of Charter Walk, which is located between West Street and Hazlemere Public Car Park. The site is occupied by a coffee shop. Due to the nature of this coffee shop, it is considered to fall within an A1 use. However, the current occupiers wish to serve hot food, which would shift the use from the A1 use, which it's currently in, to an A3 use, which more formally comprises coffee shops, cafes and restaurants. These photos show the site, Barista Coffee, and the adjoining beauty salon and opticians. These photos show opposite the site, a betting shop and an Italian restaurant. The floor plans would remain as existing, and an extract duct would be positioned from the kitchen out to externally. This photo shows, sorry, this plan shows the existing rear elevation, which faces onto the service access. The extract ducting would be positioned just above the door here, and no changes would be made to the front elevation, which would remain as existing. As I said previously, the current occupiers are planning to remain, but they do want to serve hot food, which is the reason for the application. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development and highways issues. The matters of judgment are the loss of the retail use, the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, members. I must apologise, keep turning round, but nothing's working up here tonight, so I'm trying to see what you're seeing over my shoulder, and it's not very elegant. Councillor King?
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Chairman. I welcome this application, I think it's a really good step forward, but I do have some serious concerns about the location of the extractor fan, which will come right underneath the front door of the apartment above, and having had experience in my own ward of fragrant aromas arising from restaurant ducts interfering with residents' enjoyment of their property, I am rather concerned about this. I wonder if officers could please reassure me that they are absolutely satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, officer. Oh, there you are.
Thank you, yes. Our colleagues in environmental health have fully assessed the proposed extract duct to include both the smells and noise that would come from this, and they are happy that it wouldn't impact on the adjoining occupiers. This has also been secured by a condition to make sure that the extract ducting is introduced prior to the commencement of the use, which would be the cooking of hot food.
It's going to be like Wimbledon, isn't it, this one? Councillor King?
So, thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you for indulging. Are we allowed to put in a condition requiring the extraction system to be cleaned on a regular basis? I say, having had this problem before in my ward, and often it was because the operators didn't have the ducting cleaned out properly on a regular basis, and the place used to stink of curry. I'm sure they're not going to produce in curry, but you never know.
Officers, who's an expert on extraction ducts?
Yeah, we could ask for a maintenance schedule to be submitted and approved as part of a condition.
Councillor Edwards?
I'm not sure I need to declare an interest here, but I'm a regular user of barista. I hope the proprietor mentioned it to me, that he was looking for to have food and everything else in there. So, I understand it's only going to be during the daytime, from what I could gather, and it won't be in the evening. Can we ensure that the extractor gets turned off at a reasonable time? Because there's nothing worse when you're trying to get to sleep and the extractor's going. So, that's my only query here. I think councillor King has made a very strong point, and we should restrict the time that that extractor's on, if possible.
Any officers want to apply to that? We have got times in one of the conditions, haven't we?
There is a condition stating that the use hereby permitted should not be open to customers outside the following times, 7am till 9pm on Mondays to Saturdays, and 7am till 7pm on Sundays. We could incorporate into that condition that the extract ducting shall not operate outside of those times as well.
Has anyone else wished to raise a new point? We'll have to look at new conditions then. We need a new condition then for a maintenance schedule to be submitted. Do we have a wording for that from one of the officers?
Thank you, chairman. Prior to the commencement of use, a maintenance schedule shall, in respect of the extract duct, shall first be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority, and thereafter adhered to in accordance with the agreed details. And then, the amendment to condition four could just be an additional line after the use hereby permitted shall not be open to customers outside the following times after open to customers put, and the operation of the extract fan, and then outside the following times. I think that would cover it, chairman, hopefully. Thank you.
Right, does that cover everyone's? Separate condition on a schedule of maintenance and an amendment to condition four to put in stricter times on the use of the actual?
I think probably it would read better if you started off with the operation of the extractor fan and the use hereby permitted. You don't even have to be open to customers, just the use hereby permitted shall be limited to the following times.
I was going to say, I think, we're getting into that sort of detail. Are the officers quite happy that they can produce some wording? And are members quite happy with those two amendments? Councillor Rand?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Maiden speech, if I have to declare that. I was just curious, I too am a user of barista, I like the place, and I also noticed that in Hazlemere, there's a shortage of decent places to eat in the evening. I wonder what happens when this expands? If this takes off, and he's given permission to do this until nine o'clock, what happens when he wants to extend that to midnight?
The simple answer is he comes back in for a?
He has to come back. Okay.
I think there's no further speakers. Can we then move to the recommendation? Oh, sorry, I've got to take a vote on the condition, sorry, I can't just accept that you agreed. Right, could I see all those in favour of the new condition on the maintenance schedule and the amended condition on the extract duct? All those in favour? Right, good. So unanimous, can we move now then to the recommendation? It's on page 99, the agenda, subject to conditions 1 to 4, and the amended 4 now as we know, and, which are on page 99 to 100, and the informatives on page 100, and with the extra maintenance condition, are we all agreed? Sorry, the recommendation is to grant, are we all agreed? Unanimous. Right, there are no items to consider an exempt, so that's the end of the meeting. So, thank you very much, members.